So your volume control will be either your computer or the soundboard, whatever it's plugged into. Your computer, you have a control, your volume control. Are you supposed to be hearing audio now?
No.
Okay.
But it was up as high as could go.
Oh, okay. That'll do it.
So the screen will go to this from that once I turn this on?
That's plugged into your projector, so whatever happens, you don't need the projector anymore. You shouldn't.
Yeah.
It should just be when you start your computer, when you start the program on your computer, it should automatically play.
What I'm doing is I'm sitting in the Zoom workplace waiting for our meeting to start. So if there's something on my screen, it's not up there.
Okay. Do you want that up there?
Well, if you're one step closer to where we need to be.
So do you want to see your Zoom screen up here?
Yes.
See, I'm a Mac guy.
Okay.
But... So you have... You have... It's different here. You have the ability to send this through your screens. I think it's a function. So you'd rather see this now.
Well, he's going to explain that stuff to us.
Okay.
How do you do it just from here? Turn around so they can see.
No, it should be up there.
So you have to hit the doors?
Yeah, as soon as... As I know.
I obviously throw it.
Is this back on? That's no. So there's... I don't know which... There's one of these up there. It's this one.
Or she has to press them together.
No.
No, because we...
No, this is your... Your computer is going out to the projector. That... This is coming from you, right?
Yeah.
Okay. How does that mean through your different screens?
More than just...
Sure. So I'm sensitive to that.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Dionne, I thought, wait, is John coming too?
No.
Okay.
But I think Jason is.
Who is he?
I don't know. She said she was going to make him come anyway.
Oh, okay.
Good, you?
I'd like to welcome everybody to our October 16, 2024 Bruce Township Board and Trustees meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Here. Here.
The chair chief's on a rack on 35 and that, so I don't know if he can show us. We stand to do the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where every justice is.
Members of the board have an opportunity to take a look at consent judgment. Is there any deletions, additions, or changes they'd like to make?
Question. So on your new business, 7H, township board members for your accomplishments. And I think that's great that we do that. But does it seem somewhat political in nature since you don't do it every year or every month? I just wanted to make sure. So who does every... I don't get comment, but okay.
The last... This could be the last meeting for some of the board members. And at the last meeting, we found the other board members, they did the same sort of thing.
And we have done year-end reports.
Well, item 7A, the green space presentation, we're going to remove that from the agenda. Just warnings be done with Village and Romeo Schools. They probably make a kind of motion on that. And also like to strike 7D, which is the Cross Boy appeal to get...
We can't strike that. We have to make a motion. So we'll have to take it up. We're just going to motion to move it.
But she's not here to represent it.
Right, so we make a motion, okay. Right. Just make a motion to remove it now, please.
No, we should make a motion to bring up the next meeting. The table.
Anybody else have anything?
So the only thing we're officially removing from the agenda is 7A.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Or...
Or by the Georgio. If we have no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Philbrook?
Yes.
Georgio?
Yes.
Voice?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kraft, yes.
Motion carries. Remove on item... Item number four, the comments from the floor. So this is the opportunity for anybody from any residents or people in the audience to welcome and come up at the podium. We would like to keep your comments to a maximum of three minutes. You could just state your name and your address for the record. Chuck, come on up.
Yeah, my name is Chuck Pedrodi. I've been a resident here in Bruce Township for 40 years. I'm here just to speak on... We had a problem in our subdivision here some time ago, a flooding problem. And every... We have a pond back there and everything was backed up water everywhere, out on the road, everywhere. And some of the residents were out there trying to get a manhole cover off. And being elderly people in my subdivision, nobody could get this thing lifted off. We were trying, trying. Finally, this guy stops, comes out with his tools and takes the cover off and brings this pump out, his electric pump, to pump the water out of this manhole so we could see why it was plugged up. There's three manholes from the pond out to the sidewalk and then one from there out to the road. Well, the one from our last manhole to the road was plugged. So we had to take this off and put this pump in there and he pumped it out for, I don't know, three or four hours before we got that one down. We could see that it was what was plugged. And this guy went down in there and got this stuff cleaned out so it could drain. And it finally started to drain. And all the people standing around didn't recognize this guy. And it happened to be Mike Philbrook. He was going by and he saw what was happening and he really fixed this problem for us in a real quick hurry. But the other thing is, number three manhole cover, when he took it off, here was a big turtle about 18 inches in diameter with his nose up. So we fished him out. He must have been in there for a long time because there's eight-inch pipe coming into that manhole cover. He was bigger than getting back out, so he spent a lot of time in that manhole cover or in that manhole. Probably grew up, matter of fact. But anyways, we took him out, took him down to the creek and let him go. So he had a smile on his face all the way to the creek, I'm sure, you know? But anyways, we never get a... We never got a chance really to thank Mike for what he did. It saved a lot of problems in our subdivision, you know? It's McVicker's Metals right around the corner here, so... But thank you very much, Mike. We appreciate it. That's from everybody.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Can we just ask, what plugged it up besides the turtle? Was there like...
There was broken concrete and some twigs got sideways. And then, you know, it's just kind of like your gutters. You get one twig in one way and then the other one goes the other way before you know it's all plugged up. There was broken concrete on there. It was, it's an empty turtle.
Were you able to clean that out of there then?
Yeah. And everything flowed. And there was obstruction by the road after that. It was like clean as a whistle. Never a problem since, so... Public comments still open?
Paul Lokanyevsky, 71970 Lassier Road, Bruce Township. I'm a member of the Romeo Rotary and I'd like to inform you about two events that are coming up. The first is called Pumpkins for Polio, October 23 at Miller Farm on Romeo Plank, north of 32 Mile Road. It's $20 a ticket. That includes a hayride, bonfire, cider, and donuts. And you can take a mum or a pumpkin home with you. And a portion of that, those proceeds go to help fight polio. The second one is the Rotary is working with another group called Coalition Against Hunger. And they help put together 390-gram food packets that provide enough nutrition for an average of about eight people. And we're going to set up with them to make 10,000 of these packages, which would... We'd like a portion of them to go to help with the hurricane victims and that would feed about 30,000 to 40,000 people. Finally, as a candidate for Bruce Township Supervisor, I'd like to address a rumor started in 2020 that has turned into a perpetuated lie in 2024. I have never stated that I would reduce the benefits of emergency personnel or township employees. Elected officials come and go. However, the township employees are the people that carry the bulk of the workload. Mike and Frank have continued to try to associate me with the previous board's issues. If they wanted to be truthful, they would review my voting record, which a majority of the time I oppose the previous board. I also voted no nine times when the board voted themselves a raise. I asked the supervisor, have you done that? No. Instead, you add an agenda item cherry picking data to make you look good. It sounds like an act of desperation. And all due respect to this gentleman, there's twice as many people that have asked Mike for help and he's told them that it wasn't his problem or his issue and they had to work it out themselves. I tried holding the previous administration accountable. They in turn supported Mike and Frank in 2020 to get into the positions they have today. And yet they continue to disparage the very people that got them elected four years ago. I'm running to represent the people in Bruce Township. They're tired of the deceit and lies. They're tired of special interests controlling our township. They want to be heard and respected. They want transparency and honesty. They don't want the township counting their chickens. And the people of Bruce Township want to maintain the rural atmosphere and they will be voting on November 5. Thank you.
Steve Crayson, 74103, Kaney Road. Last month, you went over the financial audit. My initial impression was that we were doing pretty good based on what I heard. There was a lot of talk of how we were doing better today than we were four years ago. After that meeting, I started digging into the actual audit reports going back for the last three years. You discussed unfunded OPEB liabilities and how they were 9% funded that year and 0% funded four years ago. Here is what I didn't hear. I didn't hear any comparison to where we were last year or the year before. I didn't hear any of the actual numbers behind that 9%. And when I started looking into it, I was kind of shocked at what I learned. We've been kind of fluctuating between 7 and 9% for the last three years. In the 2021 audit, you implemented, after implementing a corrective action, the unfunded OPEB liabilities were adjusted down to $4 million. Since 2021, they've actually steadily been increasing in an hour over $6 million. This is concerning as I didn't hear any of this in the report or an explanation as why and if there was a corrective action planned. So for me, this looks like, you know, there's a 20-year plan. From the looks of it, it's already heading in the wrong direction. Another item that was glanced over really quickly was the $1 million in water debt without fully acknowledging the problem. And again, I didn't hear any plan to solve it. I understand that things don't always go according to plan. But I expect leaders to take responsibility for the bad along with the good. After looking at the numbers, I felt everything I heard was spin. And that makes me question, what else am I not being told? We can't fix issues if we don't first take responsibility for them. I'm honestly not sure if we're doing better than we were four years ago because I don't know all the facts and I don't know what else I'm not being told. Looking at the finances, I see room for improvement. Looking at the general checking account from the August financial report, it looks like we had $340 interest on an $800,000 balance. So, you know, I don't know why we're not earning interest on this money. But for me, I would think, you know, proper interest on that could be anywhere between 20 and 50,000 per year. So I look at some of these issues we have and I see with proper budgeting and less frivolous spending, we could resolve a lot of these issues in a short amount of time or at least better than 20 years. So 20 years seems more like kicking the bucket down the road. Thank you.
Just want to clarify that those numbers are not from anybody here at the township. Those are from our auditors. It's a professional firm that does a lot of auditing from a lot of different municipalities and those numbers came from our auditor. So I don't know if there's any way any of us as a board member could actually twist those numbers around. So those are factual and they are true.
Bob Belik, 13947, 34 Mile. I hear a lot of people talking about this election stuff. This really isn't the place to do it. But I'd like to hear specifics. When people say Mike hasn't helped somebody, I see this man every day helping anybody that walks in the door. So to say that he's said no to anybody... He works seven days a week. I have a hard time believing that he didn't help anybody. When you start talking about the OPEB liability and the numbers, and the auditor tried to explain it when he was here, but maybe I can explain it in a little easier. That's a moving target that every time we hire somebody based on their age, salaries, that number moves. That number goes up. If it's a young guy, I mean, it's all based on actuarial numbers. So when we increase firefighters, for example, which is what the liability is really from, that number increases. It changes. So the money being put into that prior to this administration, those liabilities were just paid out of general revenue, which it's not supposed to be. The state of Michigan had an issue with that. That's the type of stuff that drove most of the major cities in this country down was their legacy costs with municipal employees, okay? Because they weren't funded. They were just using cash flow. You can't do that down the road because it keeps growing. So if you want to look at numbers, I'm in the treasurer's office every day. You can call me. You can come in. We can talk. When it comes to the water debt fix, a lot of the water debt that these people incurred came from the previous administration's lack of action on issues with meters. This also happened at a time when we were at the crux of COVID. People wouldn't let you into their homes. You couldn't force your way into their homes. You couldn't change the meters. Meters weren't available. Fixes weren't available. They worked the best they could. I was in meetings with Mike, with the manufacturer of the meters, with the installer of the meters, all of that stuff. As soon as it could be fixed, it was fixed. And I get tired of hearing people pick apart little sniglets from an audit that they don't understand. Okay. As far as interest on funds, we have not had funds to invest other than the fire department funds. And we do invest those, but we have to invest those very carefully based on state law as far as how you can invest taxpayer dollars. So you can't just play the stock market with it, okay? So let's look at things from a realistic perspective. And if you have any questions, call me.
Thanks, Bob.
Kimberly Plataboy, 72255, Fisher Road. I was just wondering, Supervisor Philbrook, can you let me know there's a lot of new homes going up by me? And are the assessors still going and inspecting every private residence like they told me they were? Or has that been ceased and assessed now?
Okay, you have the answer to the question, yeah. But it's standard policy that they will measure every house that's in the township. Yeah.
And go into them, okay.
But they don't necessarily have to go into the house unless they... There's a reason for it. But I don't know what your... What the point is, what you're trying to say.
Well, last time I addressed this board, I was bringing forth to you an issue that happened with me and the assessors, but you didn't want to hear it. And your assessors informed me when they came to my home that they go to everybody's brand-new build and go inside and look in cabinets and bedrooms and closets and so forth.
The assessors went there the next day and you had a totally different attitude.
Because they stayed outside.
Maybe they should be here and you guys should talk so we can figure out where the truth is.
Well, I tried addressing you about it, but you wouldn't let me talk. So I just...
Just like we are now.
We have new homes going up and the assessors haven't been there. So I was just wondering if that's still a practice that you have.
And to assess their taxes, so yes, they have a great assessing department. To evaluate at what point that home is built at, if it's built at 25%, 50%, 75%, or 100%, that's how they get taxed accordingly. So yes, they do go to all those new builds.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Because those people work very hard, and it's very, taken very offensively that you can, you know, I mean, I'm sorry that you had a bad experience with our assessors. They do do a very good job, and I've never heard any complaints about any of them.
Well, sir, when they approached my house, they did not identify themselves, they had no identification on them, and they walked right past me inside to my new home. And I think that, well, I wouldn't be up here lying, Mike, I mean, come on.
They would not do that. They, first of all, they...
Okay, so now you guys are calling me a liar?
First of all, they show, I didn't call you a liar.
You just said that they wouldn't do that, and I'm telling you, they did.
Tells them they wouldn't do that.
Okay, they did.
They have township vehicle, they have badges on, and that's it.
No, they came into my home and walked right past me. I didn't lie.
All right, thank you.
I don't lie.
All the comments still open?
Good evening. My name is David Vincent, 74580, Kaney Road. I stood up at the last board meeting, and I wanted, and I did, thank you all for the work that you do. There's been a lot of accusations about improper conduct and motives on this board and by the Planning Commission as well, and that's really what I would like to speak about tonight. Ms. Boyes addressed it at the end of the last board meeting with a letter that she had written and read, stating that the request to look into the master plan is something that came from the Planning Commission, it wasn't an action from this board. It is something that you are supposed to do on a regular basis, it is a part of operating your township in a good way, and I appreciated that. There was another comment, I'm going to read this, this is from Mr. Hagelstein, who says, "I am one of your Bruce Township Planning Commissioners. I, as well as other commissioners, completed the MSU Citizen Planner Training. Much false narrative is now appearing on Facebook regarding the current Planning Commission and separate Board of Trustees' desire to change our master plan and make Bruce Township more like Washington Township." This is absolutely false. So it's an absolute lie. I'm just going to cut it down a little bit, absolutely false, that's a good way to describe it, but really, it's a lie. The people that are advancing this narrative are lying about the motives of the Planning Commission and about this board. I received some flyers. This one here says, "There's an ongoing effort to radically commercialize our township." I know that's not true. It says as well that you're planning to rezone Van Dyke from 34 to 38 mile, from residential to commercial and industrial. I know as well that's not true. I know that the master plan will be looked at, but that doesn't mean that it will be changed, it will just be evaluated, and it is responsible to do that. I have another flyer here that says that current members, Mike Filbrook and Frank DiGiorgio, support four miles of commercial zoning in Bruce Township. I already know that's not true, I've checked. Changing the master plan to accommodate the new unfettered commercial zoning as well, that is not correct. So I hope that you'll stand strong in the face of these false accusations and false comments about what's going on in this township. I respect the work that you do, and I hope that you'll continue to do it the same way you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Now we're going to close public comment, and then move on. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Move on to item, uh, there's no hearings and reviews, we'll move on to item 6A Civic Plus. I think we have a possible panel.
Greg, are you there? Oh, good, okay. Okay. Everybody, this is Greg from Civic Plus. He's going to give us a little presentation. To talk, so I can see if the volume is good.
Do you have a minute?
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Susan asked me to give you a little introduction to our web environment, and so we've only got a few minutes, so what I thought we would do is we'll look at some of the designs that I shared to give you some of the ideas of how exciting some of the new government websites could be, and then also we'll take a quick look at creating some content real quick. We'll create a page and see how quick and easy the backend is as well. So here we go. From the front-end side, we look at several types of designs. These first designs that we're looking at here are what we call premium. The premium designs are called premium because there's some coding on the homepage that allows the branding logo to be in the top-left corner, you've got a lot of room across here for your searchable departmental funnels, and then the analytics we do at the onset of every project will identify what these quick links are across the bottom, and where people are most frequently coming to your current site. So in some instances, it may have a requisite that also drives what those links are, but in most cases, the analytics will provide that information for us. The next type of designs are what's called ultimate. The ultimate designs, you know, come in two different types, the scrolling and non-scrolling. A little different as far as, you know, these designs start from a blank canvas, so there's no coding, which is why these are so very different when you're looking at one from the other. The placement of things are wherever you have intended them to be as far as, you know, your design elements and your design requirements. So again, these are the non-scrolling. The mega menu is a little bit different, but in most instances, the municipalities that choose this type of design are somewhat larger, and in many cases, they have, you know, 10 or 15 departments or more that are posting content, and each of those departments, they may have two or three people posting. So it just requires a different type of menu, but the functionality of the menu itself, it works just like any other design. So there's no difference functionality-wise from one to the other, it's just how they're presented on the homepage of the design. So again, those are the major differences when you're thinking about the premium versus the ultimate. As I mentioned, there's two different types of ultimates, there's the scrolling and non-scrolling. Those who choose scrolling, like Nemety here, and some of the others that we're going to look at here in just a second. Typically, the design appear is consistent with what we've seen on the previous designs, there's no real difference, the same type of mega menu, the same analytics-driven for the links. But the ones that choose to go scrolling are usually the ones that want their news items and/or calendaring on the homepage without even having to click to go internal to the page. So you'll see them done very differently from municipality to municipality, but like Nemety here, they've got their calendar right here below. Dover as well, same type of mega menu, same quick links, they've got their announcements here, so they mix it up a little bit. And again, since these are, you know, starting from a blank canvas, it's really whatever your design team can conceptualize as far as what you're wanting for your design. They've got these landing tiles down here that are branded for meetings and events. So again, these can be driven, you know, by the departments when they create these events and meetings, they not only appear at the department level, but they also appear on the homepage as well. So this is consistent with every, every one of the designs as well. Buchanan, same thing, it's a great mega menu, also like when they insert some additional images, you can have as many images as you want on the homepage, some have a few, some have literally hundreds. But in many cases, on these types of designs, they'll also put some images into the menu itself, so it's kind of a neat characteristic as well. Videos are really important. When we came out of COVID, COVID was a big driver of using videos, meetings for streaming meetings and recording meetings, but as we came out of COVID, people saw the benefit of having those recordings on there for either introductions, or for community events, or welcoming, you know, videos from tourism departments, or mayors, or economic development, all these types of things. So again, we see a lot of videos on a lot of designs, and then likewise, what we see kind of mixed up from what we just saw was their vids and also their news announcements. So it's in a different position, but again, again, these are all created around the way that you want it designed. Wild Hunt here, Wild Hunt is really known for the many changes that they really infected into their design on a frequent, regular basis. So they usually change up their links here from time to time, but this one in particular, the last time that they had it was for, during the summertime, was for swim lessons, they also changed it for election season. But again, all these things are doable on the backend by the staff when, you know, those changes are needed, and very easy to do, which is why a lot of municipalities enjoy doing them, because they are so quick and simple to do. As I mentioned, for videos, they've also got a welcoming video from mayor, so that's kind of a nice feature. And their how-do-eyes, again, helping the citizens quickly find the information that are important to them internal to the website. Their community news, a lot of information, a lot of things going on here, so you can look forwards and backwards, that type of thing, but this changes quite frequently. It is a dynamic area like most of these landing tile areas are. Different type of calendar, Karen did a different calendar as opposed to Jennifer's regular calendar view, so she's extrapolated out the events on one side, the meetings on the other side, so it still operates functionally like a regular calendar, but this is just some of the diversity that you can get when you're having, you know, unlimited, you know, design element for your calendar and for your website. You see a lot of different ways that people project different elements that still do the same thing. So it still accomplishes a regular calendar view and putting those notices and meetings out there, but it's just a way of just having a design frame that she really enjoyed. Crosspoint, a newer design, again, this one has a lot of information organized extremely well. They have the website, but they also have our meeting solution and codes of ordinances. So again, all of that tight integration, that is unique to Civic Plus and our ability to integrate tightly from the website to the code of ordinances to the meetings and agenda solution as well. Being able to search across those platforms, that's something that nobody else can do. So again, in this particular case, they have all three solutions, and they're tightly integrated. And that integration really starts to break down the disparity of, you know, having to search in multiple locations for information when you're on the website, and what you're looking for may potentially be in one of the historical meetings, you know, again, it's just one-click way to get into those meetings and see everything that you need to see from that perspective, and you're just doing a couple clicks, and everything's at your fingertips. Same thing, you know, with your codes of ordinances, but again, makes it very easy. Trish did a great job with her website over at White Lake as well. She did a wonderful design of the site, also very well organized as far as the menu is concerned, so she does change hers up quite a bit as well, and she has changed hers for the election period. So again, that's what I was mentioning a minute ago, I think with Buchanan and a couple of the others, but I say that quite a bit as far as best practice. Her calendar is very typical, you know, again, these were driven by the departments, and then her news is below, so again, mixed up a little bit, but it's preferable to her, and it accomplishes what she's trying to do. Finally, the last thing we're going to do is quickly look at how easy it is to create some content. And so in our little demo environment here, we're going to go to the dashboard as an employee, and I've created a police department. And so in this police department, we're going to, essentially, we've got an airshow coming up this weekend. Airshows typically around military holidays, the 4th of July, Labor Day, Memorial Day types of things, so we're going to create an airshow page for our citizens. All we're going to do is start with create the page, that gets us started, then we're just going to simply give it a title. The microsite is the department, and so I will stay in that department that I've been assigned to by my administrator. Now, the body of the content is like any other Word document, we all use Word all day, every day, but there are some unique features that are instilled into our technologies that help drive ADA compliance, which is another very important aspect of government websites. So I've created a little bit of content over here that is not readable by those mechanical devices that somebody who is blind or visually impaired might use. This is coded improperly, so it would not be able to be read by those devices. But again, once I try to put that information in here, the website recognizes that I'm about to make a mistake, and as quick as I can click enter, it strips all that out, it recodes, reformats everything, gives me a nice workable environment. But the most important part about what just happened is now we're ADA compliant, and that person who is visiting your page, who may be blind or visually impaired, trying to read this, their device will be able to read this content now. So again, as a user from the police department, I didn't even know anything about the ever imported American with Disabilities 508 standards, it just corrected all that for me, and it's built into the website. Doesn't matter where you post your files, they're easily accessible, and so if I want to put a document on here to help people parking, I'll just go to the police department server, upload that document, and what it's doing now is tagging for searchability, that optimization I was talking about earlier, put a friendly name, parking document, page category. Again, this is what I hear over and over, the people tell me when they're trying to put documents onto their current website, that they have this painful process of cutting and pacing, that's no longer needed. Behind each one of these boxes is a feature, a set of, you know, technology that ensures that verification, appropriate to the type of document that it is. So again, we'll see that here in just a minute. Images, we saw several that had videos, so if we wanted to put a video, all we would do is click the video box, and we'll put the URL right here. But we're going to do a little bit more with ADA, so let's talk about images for a second. So I'm going to put an image, I'm going to go and grab that image, again, it's going to be at the police department level, and we're going to grab a picture of the Memphis Bell, say the Memphis Bell's coming to our airshow. Grab that image, open it up, and again, it's tagging that image with metadata, but it's also evaluating the type of image that it is. And in this particular instance, this is not a PDF, it is a certain, this is an image file, so it recognizes once again that there is a requirement, which is what this asterisk means here. So that asterisk means that every time you have to enter, every time you enter a picture onto a website page in a government website, you have to add alternate text, so that those devices that we were talking about a minute ago read to them appropriate what the image is. So we'll give it some content. And if I was on the phone at the PD and not paying attention and forgot to put something here, the website will not even allow me to advance forward until I put something there. So again, it's helping drive that ADA compliance, and now that person using that mechanical device, when they hover over it, reads to them appropriate to what the image is, again, helping drive compliance. Okay, so now we're going to take it off our personal dashboards and put it onto our department dashboard with just a click, went out to the police department, and then publishing options, we publish this. And when I get through with this, maybe it goes through a review process, and maybe I have to run out and do an errand, and while I'm out of the police department, that we did get a call, I run out and take care of the errand, maybe I have an email from my administrator when I get back to ask me to make some changes. I often ask, well, how easy is it to make your changes, you know, once you have it done? And the changes are extremely easy. So all I'm going to do, I return to the office from the call that I was sent on, I'm going to hit edit, that takes me back to the original page, so that I can make these changes according to the email that I got from my administrator. But before I make any changes at all, that page of content only took me about a minute to do, not even, not even a minute to create that page. But the administrator wanted me to make some changes, so let's go ahead and make those changes. Maybe they want me to add alerts, I'm going to add alerts, maybe some FAQs to help people parking and scheduling, that's something I get asked quite a bit. So again, you see when I click these buttons up here, it just expands the scope for what I need to do below, very, very easy. Okay, no changes there, no changes there. But images, maybe that was the first requirement or first request that I got, and the request was, you know, Greg, that image is kind of lost over here, can you center it, can you make it bigger, can you do something with it, absolutely, make it look a little bit better, and we're going to center it and make it the entire width of the page. The reason, you know, it's kind of nonsense creating an image that big, the purpose of doing that is I get asked a question quite a bit as to images, people have difficulty with their images, and most of the times when people are telling me about their images when I'm having meetings with them, is that, well, Greg, I'm trying to put an image on our page, and it's skewed, or it's pixelated, or it just won't fit in the box right, what's wrong with our image? And there's really nothing wrong with the image, it's a really simple answer, and a lot of the images these days that people are using on their websites are coming from smartphones, and it doesn't matter which one you subscribe to, whether it's the iOS, the Apple environment, you know, Samsungs, the Androids, they all pretty much, from a technology standpoint, they work the same, and they operate the same, and they stay neck-to-neck as far as their enhancements and capabilities. And the flip side, you know, what is happening here is that when people take images on those, you know, up-to-date phones, the Apple, you know, or Samsungs, or any of the others that are out there, they have a lot of data attached to them, and so they may be wonderful 4K, high-definition, whatever the marketing's telling you those images are, but the flip side is, there's a lot of data attached to each one of those images, and when you try to put that much information onto an older website, and if you can't handle it, that's why it stretches this to user, it pixelates it. But we're going to stretch this for the entire width of the page to help it manage that much content. Now, alerts, why would we have an alert? Well, maybe in a different scenario, where the parks and rent department, and it's not an important enough alert to post across the entire website, maybe we just need a place for the parents to be able to come to know, do not make the 12 or 15-mile drive into the township tonight, because we're canceling the kids' games because of bad weather. You know, maybe it's raining, maybe it's orange, adding for some lightning in the area. If it's really bad weather, if there's a tornado or something really severe in the area, that type of alert, it doesn't matter who and what department is posting it, it would be visible across the entire site, and we'll give it the highest severity red. So it's a logic around why you might post an alert on your page. FAQs are available, the military ones, we'll drop those on there. FAQs are right above the military ones, we'll drop those on there. Menu settings, no changes there. Now, scheduling options, again, this does a couple things for you. This allows you in advance to be able to create content well in advance of the need. Hypothetically, let's say that we had an airshow this past 4th of July, it was a wonderful show, we can have another one next year. I've got some downtime down at the courthouse, I'm able to create this page, but I don't need it to be visible until this time next year, right before the show next year. So if I wanted it to be visible before the 4th next year, I just put a day or two before the 4th of July 2025, and I can turn it off just as easily a day or two after. Again, this helps you create content in advance, you set it, forget it, you don't have to remember to come back, it'll do all that managing for you. On the other side of this is, a lot of times when I'm talking to people about their websites, they tell them, well Greg, we've got so much outdated information on our current site that even the people who posted that content no longer employ it here, and so it does that as well, it helps you keep old outdated content off of your website, so this feature is very beneficial when you're creating content. Let's go ahead and publish this page, let's look at the final page. Okay, so here's our final page, there's our alert across the top, and there's our image, it was just a little bit of image over here, we stretched it, there's no skewing, no pixelation. All that weirdness that was in that colored form has all been stripped out, we're ADA compliant there. We got FAQs to help people with parking, we got a parking document. Now that is a completed page, we can share with other departments, we can share with citizens, it's one way to send out alerts, citizens are signed up to the alerts, which is an included feature, just a single click, whether it's one citizen or 10,000, they all get this update immediately if they're signed up to the police department alerts. Another way to get information out is, there is an integration with social media, so again, this is a highly regarded feature that we have, and if we had a police department Facebook or Twitter page and this was a more important alert, maybe a missing child or something, we really need to get it out on broader communications go, one click and that alert is going out over our social media as well, so again, very easy to be able to switch back and forth between the website and your social media and those important instances. Those other replication that we talked about, so that document, where did it go? So when you create documents, same thing with your meetings, when you create those documents, they're instantly recorded onto a repository so that in the future, your residents can search for any documents they may need, whether it's a parking document for this week's airshow, or maybe I'm looking for a permit because I'm building a foundation, new foundation, or a patio behind my house, whatever's needed, I can search for those documents by either department, boards and commissions, or just a search term of the general documents I'm looking for. So all that automation's built in for both the documents that are created while creating a page, and also the meetings and agendas and packets, all that information is instantaneously recorded as well, so that replication happens instantaneously. And the speed and expediency of how quick this can happen, you can see that we created an entire page, went through the changes and everything that we did, it took right under two minutes to do that. So very, very easy to create a page, a meeting is just as simple, and it just, again, it just is transformative because I've been doing this for a long time, over 10, 12 years now, and when I look back at the many municipalities that I've helped build over the years, you know, I see a lot of times that not only the one or two folks that I was speaking with are still creating content, maybe they're the administrators, but they seem to have expanded into their departments, and because it's easy, those departments enjoy, you know, creating content, and because they're creating more and more content, there's more interaction between them and their citizens, and it's just, like I said, the many of them that I look backwards over the years, it's been completely transformative for their entire municipality. So I'll end there and say thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Don't they, we don't have a copy of your contract, he's gotta get the contract online?
Yes, I have.
I have a question.
Where's the contract?
May I ask your question?
Well, I'm still looking for the contract.
I think it's in right here.
But I mean, our contract still needs to be looked at, the attorney, by the attorney, the attorney had an opportunity to take a look at it, we come up with a package, an idea of a package.
So this is a proposed policy.
Yeah.
There's no contract, there's no invoice or contract, right? So I guess that's what I'm saying, we need a contract. I like it, I think it's a great idea, you know, since you took office, we've been very transparent about everything, and this even enhances that. Yeah, like Paul, I think we need a contract.
Well, we've paid one year in full, then we got 60-day, you know, clause we can get out of, not to say it's bad, but we gotta pay for the first one year upfront, and then we still don't, like I said, have the contract, and then basically, I wanna have our attorney take a look at it.
Does anybody have a question for Nick?
I do.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm almost done.
Any questions, Sue?
Yeah.
I've got a couple coming in.
It also has a built-in annual 9% increase.
Every two years, but not until every, not until the first two years.
Year two, and then every year at 9%.
But the other part about the Civic Plus reserves the right to basically negotiate the contractual terms, obligations, encumements, and insurance requirements before final agreement is reached. I mean, I just wanna see if we get a contract.
Why don't we ask him a question, so we can discuss?
Okay, go ahead.
And first, okay, so what happens with our current site if we choose to do this? What happens with our current site while it's being implemented?
So your current site is still active, and what we're doing in the background is we're migrating that content over based on the requirements, assisting the rest of the team of what they want for their new website, and then once it's completed, and they have agreed with all of the functionality, features, and looks and feel exactly the way they want, then the team is trained on the usability of the site, and then at that point, then we make the switch. So then you're not losing your current site, you know, it doesn't go away until, you know, we activate the new one, so it is still active until this one is built, like the St. Joseph one we're looking at now, and then once they're trained and they're ready to use it, then we flip over and then you're on your new site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You have a question?
Yeah, two, please. Can we, that the township decides to go with this product, as part of the package, do you provide training, for lack of better words, for the people in the office who would be populating this and editing it on an ongoing basis?
Yeah, so training, you're completely surrounded by training, and what we do is, there's a tremendous amount of training that goes on at the time of the creation of the site, and then once that training is over, everybody that is, there's gonna be a user of the site will have their own dashboard similar to the one you saw me on a minute ago. That page, let me go back to that just real quick for you. So that dashboard has training links here, there's a link that takes you out to a couple of little too-minute videos on every single feature that's on the site. If that's not appropriate, then there's a way to communicate. There's also another training aspect of being able to sign on to ongoing training that we have every single day. So this, all these links that I'm bringing over now are just additional training and support that each user is gonna have at their fingertips. So not only do they get, you know, four or five different ways to contact somebody immediately, if I need help, I can call somebody, I can send a ticket into the support, you know, I can talk to them, you know, through chat, we have a chat portal that's gonna be on their pages as well, you see this chat bot right here, so they'll be able to talk to somebody through chat immediately, so that's, again, four or five ways instantly you can talk to somebody, but then on an ongoing basis as well, we, every single day, we have ongoing training, and so these webinars and all these white papers and information is at fingertips of all of the users for the municipality, and if they see something that is of interest for them to sign up, all they have to do is just sign on to any of these ongoing educational webinars, and then, again, that's free training that we provide as well. So there's, again, five or six different ways to talk to somebody, there's ongoing webinars and training available, and then there's also, like I said, on that page I was on a minute ago, not only are there webinars, but there's online resources that is available as well, so you're literally surrounded, you know, by your help and support. In addition to the educational piece, at the time of the contract, and not only is a project manager assigned, but also a customer success manager, whoever he or she is, they're responsible for, you know, from time to time, keeping in touch with Susan and the team to see what's needed from that standpoint as well. So they're gonna be on point throughout the entire build of the website, and then afterwards, whatever schedule Susan and the customer success person set up, they'll touch base with her and say, you know, do you need anything? Do you have any new employees that need to be trained? Is everything working okay for you? And that's, you know, they really just keep the finger on the pulse of what's going on and make sure that they receive the help and support they need, and that's part of our whole team as well.
I have another question, Susan, and this may be for you. You had sent, I forgot, to Reebok this morning, you had sent us out some information maybe a couple weeks ago in clarifying timing for something on this to be brought about.
Greg, you told us what the timeframe is for this. It sounds like we're gonna want the attorney to look at the contract, but after, once that's approved, we've approved it.
Yeah, so once it's approved and you sign the SOW or the proposal that you have there and return it, the next steps are, is I will set the project up into our system, that usually takes about 24 hours, and then triggers the assignment of the two individuals I was talking about a minute ago, your project manager and your customer success manager. The next step is, once that customer success and project manager are assigned, they will then set up a kickoff meeting with Susan and the team. Their team will get together for their first kickoff meeting, they'll discuss, you know, all of the design and feature functionality elements that they wanted in the new site, and that usually is within the first, you know, couple of weeks, and then from that standpoint, they're often, they're often creating their first iteration, they'll bring it back, and then soon the team will say, I don't like this, I don't like this, let's tweak that, until they're completely happy with it, and then that's when they enter into the training aspect of it. And then once they're trained and they're completely, you know, happy and with their capabilities, and then, you know, they're going their life, it's truly, they've got it down to an art, it's just, it's a very streamlined process, all of the steps are in that worksheet, too, so if you got that for the folks, the worksheet has every step of the way, and how long each step of the way takes. So again, usually it takes about three months, three to four months, it's typical. Determining factor is how quick the team can share with our project team, you know, their requirements and needs, and again, all those things tend to happen pretty quickly, but I've seen it happen much quicker, and then in some cases, you know, with some of the larger municipalities that I've worked with that, you know, have a lot of people on their design team, those tend to take a little bit longer. And the challenge there is just, you know, being able to get everybody to a meeting from the municipality, and also, you know, for people to agree on the elements that they want, but, you know, the smaller teams, the sweet spot is usually between two to six members. That seems to be, you know, again, over the many years that I've been doing this, and the thousands of these that I've worked on, it just, that's the sweet spot of the quicker ones that move along, and those seem to get it done very quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
Okay, you have a wonderful evening. Take care.
Bye-bye.
This time, I think the next step is to get a copy of the contract, have the attorney go over the contract. Also, you know, we have a new board, it'll be here next month, maybe it'll be better for the new board to possibly make a decision, it's gonna be something that's gonna affect them for the next four years, you know, maybe get them involved with it at the same time.
We're gonna have to make a motion that the attorneys look at.
Yeah. I think a motion to have our attorneys look at the contract that Civic Plus will send to us and decide on next meeting. Let's do it, whether to proceed or not.
I'll second that motion. Do we have any other discussion?
Can we make some comments?
Can, we can have a discussion.
Personally, I think if we can make this happen, this is just outstanding, even though it's been a long-term goal of the board, this is, I can't think of a less frivolous expense than this, because it goes right to providing avenues to engage the residents and for them to get the information they need, that I think is outstanding, and because particularly at this time, we do have a surplus, I think it gives us the ability to do these kind of things. Is that it?
Agreed. Chief, did you have any concerns?
I don't, I watched that, I don't think about that.
I think, I think it's a good idea, to your point. And we, you know, we're able to communicate with our residents, providing they give us the information that is gonna be requested, like phone numbers and emails and all that, because that's the other half of the equation. And we can let our residents know when our assessing department is out assessing homes, and that way they're informed, and they know what to expect and when to expect.
Can a motion, yes, I second. There's no other discussion, we're giving a roll call, please.
Boys?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Craft, yes.
Over.
Yes.
Attorney.
Motion carries. Move on to item six, six B, which is our animal control ordinance. Susan, you want to go in?
So last month, we talked about several ordinances that municipal health keep worked on, this was one of them, and Chris Anderson, our attorney, mentioned that communities around the Macomb County are concerned about how this reads, so they are all getting together, she's working with them to rewrite, revise this, all their input, and we just made a motion to approve her, paying her, sharing the amount with those communities.
The years, I know Chesterfield, New Year's, and Township are both on board to share the cost with us.
Yep.
We did approve it back in May 18th of 2022, but since then, since it was not noticed, and we've got another opportunity to swing at it, I mean, that we're gonna work with the other two communities, I think there may be another community or two that may jump on board with us, and even make the cost a little bit less with the attorneys, so. And then Chief Randalls was definitely willing to work with, to work with the center, so it's just the best practices ordinance from Macomb County.
I just wanna be transparent, does it say animal control ordinance? This has nothing to do with chickens, so we're all clear.
So I'm making a motion to go ahead and have our attorney, get the approval, to have our attorney go ahead and work with the other communities that are involved, not just the new animal, but new animal control ordinance. Because it basically should call that it's, um...
It's that, it's the best practices ordinance.
Right.
So I'm making a motion to have Christine Anderson review her eyes.
Yeah.
The animal control best practices for us. Okay, just wanna make sure I got it.
Sue Board, George Hill, is there any other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Smith?
Yes.
Boys?
Yes.
Craft, yes. And Georgio?
Yes.
Over.
Yes, motion carries. Move on to item seven B, which is our deficit elimination plan. Do we have anything to choose from, or is it?
Yeah, we just have to approve this.
Obviously, yeah, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve as presented deficit elimination plan regarding our, this is our warrant.
Yeah, again, I wanna, I wanna make sure that, I wanna be transparent, so that way the public knows exactly what we're talking about, and there's no lies being told about it. So this is a letter that has to be submitted to the state, it's a deficit elimination plans, and the special assessment fund has a deficit of $1,637. This deficit is a normal condition to occur while the special assessment district is still being funded by annual payments from the property's owners. It is our accountant's projection based on annual payments to be received that this fund will no longer be in a deficit position by the end of the current fiscal year, March 31st, 2025. And then there's another issue here, the water fund has a deficit of $988,714 as of March 31st, 2024, an improvement from last year's ending deficit balance of $1,082,213, and it is our accountant's estimate that the water fund will no longer be in a deficit position by the year 2032 if the township board remains diligent in annual increases in the system's users fee, along with the maintaining tight controls on the water readings and buildings. And then also, a part of the equation is more users coming on board. And then also, a part of the equation is more users coming on board.
I second.
I want to add one more thing to Frank's. That money, that 980, that 1.2 or 1.1 million was paid out of general fund. That general fund does come from all the taxpayers in the township. And that means people that are not on the water district have wells in their own subject tanks. They're paying into the sewer and the water and out of their own tax dollars, which instead of making this just go away, which we have an opportunity to do, so we are paying this deficit back through the water fund and the sewer fund. So all monies are being paid back. Then we had to borrow out a general fund to, to take care of the deficit that we were dealing with. So just to let you know that all money's going to be accounted for. And like Frank said, we have strategy, short term, it's going to be paid off. No, all money will be returned. If there's no other discussion, can we get a roll call?
I would like to just, to, to what you just said, Frank. And I don't know if Steve Crazin is still out there. However, he did question about the deficit elimination plan and that it would be taking so long. But, and I don't know if he's still out there. But we do have it being resolved by 2032.
Yes.
And so that's only eight years. And I think that, that's a good step in the right direction. Yep, like you said, we keep on track of how we should do that. So he might want to take a look at this just to kind of use his mind that we are...
I agree. I wasn't, I wasn't really questioning the debt itself. I was more...
Hold on a second. We're not going to go communicate.
For eight years.
I agree. That's a good plan.
That's a good, and if you want to see it, yeah, it is, it's a good plan.
Is that it?
Yep, I just wanted somebody who knows that we are working on it. And thank you for your concern.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any, Henry?
Yeah.
Voice?
Yes.
Kraft, yes. Smith?
Yes.
Georgio?
Yes.
And Philbrook?
Yes.
The motion carries. Seven C, our internal control review.
This is something that the auditors have suggested to us, especially as we have a new board coming in. It just will, you know, communicate and work with our entire staff to talk about our internal use processes, and how we handle things, make sure we're doing it efficiently and effectively. We probably will have a changeover with our account manager in the future. So this is another way just to make sure we're all working together and doing that effectively. For example, in the last administration suggested that we couldn't take payments because we pay the bills. The ranks office has to take payments. I don't know if that's true. So it is something we, they would work with us on and...
So I'm glad you brought that up. There is no such thing as that. Well, let me rephrase that. Say, for example, somebody comes in and wants to pay their water bill or their tax bill or something, there's no problem with somebody taking that payment. Problem is, is if you have somebody from accounting doing that. That's a conflict of interest when somebody from accounting is doing, is, is looking over incoming money and also overseeing outgoing money. But if anybody else wants to take a payment, there's, there's no problem with that as long as they're trained properly in how to do it.
And this would be good for everybody to be part of the conversation.
So like, I mean, you stated, we have a new board coming in and they're, I mean, right off the bat, they want $6,000. I mean, and then they want $280 to $380 an hour.
No, this is, this is what the estimate is with these being the prices.
I know. But then they said we, we will also be going for travel and out-of-pocket costs. And it just seems like it's endless. I mean, I hate to, I hate to make a decision that this being the last month of this four-year term, when we do have a new board, I think this would be something that they need to look at when they come in. It's a big decision. I mean, is there any reason that we need to, this is not any kind of an emergency that we need to, I mean, is this...
No, I just thought it'd be a good idea to be having in place, have a conversation as they come in, the new board, be prepared for changes if need be.
I don't like the cost structure.
Is this, is it, yeah, I'm crazy about it. Is this regarding doing accounting work or?
No, it's average, the whole building, what, how we...
Oh, I see.
It's just a proposal, you know?
You want to put a motion? You want to put a motion? You want to make a motion?
Aye.
I'd like to make a suggestion.
What?
Well, there's two of us that are leading this board and two more are coming in. So I think it would be, it would behoove us to wait until after the election and you get the board on to have them take a look at it, make a decision then because that's ultimately, it's going to affect.
Yeah.
I may say yes, and, and the new board may say no. We don't know who the new board is going to be yet.
Right. I mean, the internal, you're right.
So that's my point. That's a great idea. Okay, you want to make a motion and go ahead and table to the next?
Can I just suggest that not be tabled and you not specifically say the next meeting because that's going to be a lot to throw at them. I mean, they're, they're going to be sworn in that day.
They will come on a later date?
I would say a little later than...
Future meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, then these numbers won't change in the system.
I think they'll, maybe the timeframe, but six.
So what's your motion, you want?
I'm making a motion then?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion, table the internal control review proposal to a future meeting.
I'll second. You have a discussion now? And we can roll call, please.
You seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, voice?
Yes. Kraft, yes. DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Move on item seven D, which is the Cross Boyer appeal. I'm going to be looking at, I did get a letter from the union president that she was not able to make the meeting tonight due to late notice of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to table the Cross Boyer appeal to 1120 for Ms. Cross's request.
Six, board. Is there any other discussion? We get a roll call, please?
Smith?
Yes.
Voice?
Yes.
Georgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Move on item seven F, which is a revised AL 4029 for Romeo Community Schools.
Oh.
I'm sorry, seven E, which the clerks declared.
So you all have, this is Roxanne Hatcher. You have her resume here. Have any questions? Well-respected former deputy clerk, well-respected in both Macomb and Oakland Township, Oakland County.
Has any references been done on her as why she left?
Yes.
And?
Had conversations. I, I don't, she is a stickler for details and...
Do you recall who you talked to over there?
I have talked to several people. I didn't actually talk to that officer references weren't in the office. Or did you have some specific questions?
Yeah, I called as well, and they won't give me any information unless they have authorization from this individual to release why she's not working there anymore.
Well, for one thing, she lives in Washington Township. We are much closer than Oakland Township, and she's looking for fewer hours, so...
And what, what would she be hired in as?
My motion, I'll make the motion so you know. My motion is to approve Roxanne Hatcher for the position of general office clerk two effective October 17th, 2024. So it's just like Anne Marie, that first step.
And did this get discussed with the union?
No, that this was approved, this, this office, this level, this position was just approved.
Well, I remember last time when it turned into a big fiasco. The individual that was hired was making more money than two people that were already currently here prior. So that's why I just crossed some Ts, dotted Ns.
Remember that. And this was posted. They've all seen it.
You don't remember that?
Somebody, somebody was hired that made more than other?
Yeah, there were two other people.
No, there, Frank, there was negotiation where they rounded that before we even hired that last person.
After the posting? After the posting?
Yeah.
Right. After the posting.
So this was...
When a motion was made to hire her, that's when that happened. That's how it was discovered. That caused the big turnover.
No, it was before because the, the job was posted in the kitchen where we always post things and...
It was posted. And then it was taken down and another posting went up without anybody's knowledge. They had a different rate on it, different classification. So that's why I asked if the union's been talked to about this and if we have their mind. We have a contractual bargaining agreement with the union that is a legal document. And we need to, it needs to be treated like a marriage, whether you like it or not. They need to be talked to and get input from them.
This isn't a position that they agreed on, Frank. We lost somebody replacing someone.
Okay.
And they all could have applied for this job.
Okay. I just want to make sure that this individual, if she gets hired, is not making any more money than somebody else that's already working here.
Well, if you would look at the contract, you would see.
I do look at the contract.
Well, then why are you asking me the question, Frank?
I have more concerns about why, was she let go from Oakland Township? You said she was a stickler.
Yeah, I don't know the details. They won't tell the details. It's, and you can't ask those details, Frank.
Well, we can ask those details if they, if there's a...
No, it's not.
If there's a letter of authorization from her that says we can find out why she's not working there anymore. That's all.
Well, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable sharing that without...
Well, I admit that's, I'm not asking to share. It's good for our knowledge whether she's a good fit in this office or not. There have been six people, there have been six people that have left the clerk's office within a year. So we need to find the right fit. Instead of hiring somebody and then three months down the road, they leave.
Well, that's not accurate. And if there was better communication among the offices, that might help as well.
You're absolutely right.
I made a motion.
Why does she keep hiring in and saying again?
She is general office clerk two.
Okay, and then that is addressed, that particular position, that spot is addressed in the union contract, right?
Yes. In fact, that was very recent that we created that position for...
So if she comes in at a step two and she's making more than someone else, it's in the contract, so there should be no arguing dispute.
No, no.
No, I'm not step two. That's not how they work.
No, it's not step two. It's, that's the position, general office two.
It's still zero one.
But even so, okay, so she's a general office two. If she comes in and we have general office one, she will obviously make more than general office one. There's no disputing that. Is that my understanding?
No, no, no.
You have to start at step one.
This is just the title of that position. It's not saying the level.
It's, you'll have to explain that to me because that's not where I come from. When I was working for Sterling Heights, that's not how it works.
This is what the union decided to call her position was general office clerk two.
Two.
Roman numeral two.
But it's still pay of anybody else coming in at the bottom level.
Yes.
What was the purpose of that title then?
That's just what they came up with.
It's very misleading. I mean, when you're talking about, because, you know, it's a two and one or a three, that all pays differently. So obviously it's doesn't, is what you're stating, correct?
Right. In fact, this is the exact same motion that when we hired Anne Marie Voice.
And the other...
I'm sorry, Anne Marie.
Yeah, it's got to be the bottom level. Can't, and you have, again, you have to get, it should be discussed with the union so that way they, they are, they are aware of what's happening. By the way, it should be discussed.
So we have to discuss our, when we hire someone, we should discuss it.
You should let them know. Yeah. It's courtesy.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Oh, I'm unfinished. Yeah. I was very confused at the titles, but we'll move on from it.
Just to clarify, when this person comes on board, she would be starting at step one for her position under the contract.
Yes.
And that she would also be getting, because she'd have to wait here to get vacationed. And everything will be accorded attached.
Yes.
Another issue I have is, it is my opinion that the clerk's office needs to take some efficiencies because let's put this in perspective. Not counting the elected reps, the treasurer's office has one person working there. Planning and zoning has one person working there. Building department has one and a half. Assessing has one and a half. The clerk's office has two people in the clerk's office and total of four, and then two people in accounting. Anne Marie's been gone a month now, and they're having, you guys are not missing beat. And you're going through elections, doing all the election stuff. You cannot continue wasting taxpayers' money just paying people just to have them around doing a part-time job.
Well, Frank, that's not accurate. We have, we have not done billing at all. We have one cycle of billing. No, we still have one waiting, and we're waiting on your office to give us the penalties.
You don't have, you're right. And you're waiting on our office because we have people that pay at the last minute. They pay on the very last day, last minute. So by the time that invoice filed, takes the money from the bank and that comes, transfers out to go to our bank, it takes a few days. So that bill does not have to go out on the first of the month. It can wait till the 12th of the month that has to, to go out. It does not have to go out on the first of the month.
Residents have been calling since the last one went out.
You're right. They have because you all of a sudden send it out. And you couldn't wait until the end. But anyway, my point is, is that we work, we are constantly working in our office.
I know. And we sit around, Frank. You know, we're all...
I'm just, I'm just saying you need to be more efficient with what, with, with your department. Again. All right, let's, that person, I'm, I'm okay with this person getting hired.
Well, that's obvious.
Well, actually, I'm not okay. I mean, I'm not okay because we didn't do a reference check. We need to do a reference check.
I did, thank you. I called.
I don't see any need in writing. But anyway.
Then why didn't you call around?
I didn't.
I could, you could have asked the reference, the references. You could have asked.
I did call, and no, and they would not divulge any information. My point is, is that if we hire another person, there needs to be a schedule to where she, this person bounces around between clerks, treasurers, and planning and zoning.
Well, Frank, to...
But those other two departments are in need of somebody.
About the union, there is a union, this is a position in the union contract which has a job description. You can't change something midstream.
Yeah, you can.
And also, Anne Marie was very good about helping. She did a lot of your stuff for you.
You're absolutely right. She did a lot of stuff for everybody. That just goes to prove my point. It's not a full-time job. I'm not here to argue. I'm just presenting facts.
All right, we're looking at application. I don't feel comfortable because I didn't get a good feeling with the references coming from Oakland Township today. I don't see any references.
Motion to name a second. I'll second it. Thank you.
You have a motion to second. Go ahead. You hire your one for clerk two, a year is your one clerk.
We all should be careful because this is a union position. So we have to fill it.
Do we have no other applications?
I have one application.
No one said we're not going to fill, but we need to fill it wisely. Does it have to be developed so that way that person will be...
She's a former deputy clerk.
I know.
Well-respected in both counties.
I'm not saying.
And absolutely.
It sure is. But you know what it seems to me? It seems like you're hiring this person to do your deputy clerk's job and your deputy clerk is going to do your job. You're the last one in and the first one...
Do you hear yourself?
I do hear myself. You're the last one in and the first one gone every day. Ninety-five percent of the time. Hey, Mike, this is... It's the supervisor. Ring this thing. Come on, take control. Thank you.
So we got a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Can we get a roll call?
Voice?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
No.
Philbrook?
No.
Kraft, yes.
What she did, yes.
Did, if they...
That did, Anne Marie said no?
No, I said yes.
Move on item seven F, which is everybody's, um, AL 429 for Romeo Community Schools. Frank? So this is from the Romeo Community Schools on their 2024 tax rate. They're just sending us a village of what they expect for their winter tax bill.
Basically, how it's being?
Yeah.
It says it's revised.
Yeah, it's revised from the previous, uh, judgment.
Motion to approve the revised AL 429 for Romeo Community Schools as presented.
Seconding. Any other discussion? We roll call.
Voice, yes. Smith?
Yes.
Giorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Craft, yes.
My name is 7G, which is filming his treatment services. Susan, that's kind of your.
Yeah. Uh, so, two years ago, we, um, the board voted four to one to take the filming and streaming in-house. Um, we've been working with advanced lighting. We've had some hiccups along the way. Um, last month, we had problems with the filming and I was running up and down the hall. I didn't get any help from anybody else. We're four to one majority. That's a pretty strong majority. I would think that we'd all be on board, wanting to this to go smoothly. Uh, for the planning commission meeting, I got calls, calls and texts from Rick Hagelstein complaining he wasn't at the meeting, was trying to watch it while it was running late because of Joe. Uh, he was like, which isn't uncommon. Um, there, someone on your staff was posting on Facebook during the day on a political site complaining about the filming, inappropriate. Uh, I would just like to suggest that we all come together and try and make this work together. The problem last week, or last month, was that there was a switch replacement on the server and when it was replaced, this system didn't get plugged back in. I don't know who unplugged the microphones, but they were unplugged too. So hopefully now with this new switch, um, and everything reinstated, reinstalled, uh, it will run smoothly.
I have some questions. Susan? Is there improvements to the equipment that could be made that will help alleviate some of the hiccups that have happened?
We had a new server and then with this new switch, so things like this that, uh, we're just not communicating with high tech and orange cloud and our offices, so I think that will help. Um, and also maybe, um, I'm not tech savvy. I have taken this on.
I guess.
So maybe one of the new board members might be interested in handling it and maybe they're better versed than I am, so that's an option too. I, I worked with, um, advanced lighting, but maybe as frustrated as we do because they aren't onsite and they're very busy, so.
Correct. That's why I'm suggesting, if there, if it's not just an equipment issue, maybe there is somebody who's nearby that would be, you know, consult, look for improvements one time and done.
That's a good point. I would like to thank Matt December because he has come in several times. He has been very helpful and he's always willing to, he doesn't ever charge, so that's been helpful too. So going on that resource.
Rick's spending a lot more work with Matt. Tonight and today, should they keep seeing, everybody circles back to us, the microphones, it seems like the worst thing with the meetings are is that nobody can hear us or watch the meeting.
Well, I think we're more cognizant of where the microphone is.
It's still, I don't understand why our meetings are not. I mean, you watch other people's meetings, they may have similar kind of a microphone, but it doesn't seem like we have that kind of an issue. We had a $60,000 piece of equipment, man, that we invested, um, in the township to go ahead and stream this ourselves. But again, we're lacking somewhere along the line. I mean, I think we need to get a recommendation from, you know, somebody like Matt December, maybe from a KOC, you know, you have all three of them get together with, you know, like it sounds.
Well, now that it's plugged in and work, I think that, you know, we'll give it some time.
Well, it's just not the last meeting, wasn't the first meeting. I mean, if you want to talk about it, probably eight out of 10 of our meetings have not been streamed very correctly, you know, for one reason or another.
Well, you're welcome to.
I know, it's a lot of responsibility and I mean, it's your responsibility to, to take care of it, but I'm just saying we need to.
That's my fault.
Yeah, I know, but I would say that it's not just from the last meeting, it's continuously been an issue. We need to get it somehow resolved. I would like to get some feedback. I mean, again, we got a new board, but get feedback from, um, I mean, we got a great piece of equipment, we got HDMI cameras, high resolution cameras, everything.
What about these mics? I mean, it just seems like it's all old stuff, so I mean.
They said.
You know, with earpiece, maybe, you know, kind of a mic, you would, uh, you know, there is, uh, but, you know, I watch the meetings.
I watched them on, on the YouTube and I don't have a, and I'm deaf and I don't really have a public hearing, you know.
I didn't either. I watched it last time. I didn't have any.
Yeah, it hurts. I got headphones on and I found it on my TV so I could turn the volume all the way up. My TV sometimes is very, very hard and it's not everybody, but there are self-spoken people, it does make a big difference.
I know, you need these a little bit closer, even set six inches. You need them like right here when you're talking.
I would like to try to get some more professional opinion and get some practice on what it's gonna take. If it is an issue with the mic and it is a problem with people not talking, not just here, but the planning commission is on board, the POs have the same problem. People have a tendency to want to look back in the chairs, they want to talk. So I want to get some other, maybe a different kind of microphone system.
We're looking into.
Okay. All right. And Susan, if you don't want to take care of the responsibilities, anybody?
Well, there's another one. We'll wait until the next.
Next for me? Okay. I appreciate it. It's a lot of work.
They might have some tech coming.
Okay. So we'll just hold on. I need no action on 7G then. Let's move on. Um, seven inch is gonna be the township board members for your accomplishments.
I did my job to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
You got a five chat. How are the other community people?
Sure. Um, with communication, started a triennial newsletter that went out every February, June, November. Started Bruce Township and Compton County Facebook page. Created, um, I don't want to call it created, but I call it the Cemetery Beautification Project with the three historical cemeteries that are in Bruce Township, which are technically, uh, considered green space with my deputy treasurer, Bob Billik, volunteers from the residents and high schools, uh, students. We went out there on weekends, days off, and, um, cleared up unwanted brush along the fence lines and monuments. We trimmed overgrown trees. We started, uh, the, uh, the Cemeteries of Bruce Township Cemeteries, the Stewards of Bruce Township Cemeteries Charity, in which, uh, with golf outings and various fundraisers, we've raised money to help, um, with some of the needs that need to be done there, like fencing, for example. We used some of that money for fencing. Uh, we received, applied for and received a $5,000 grant from the Fort County Community Foundation. And we were able to take that money as well as money from our fundraiser and, um, put fencing all around the Goodrich Cemetery. We put brand new fencing around three sides of the cemetery, the front cemetery, uh, the front part of it. We had fencing that was donated by, uh, one of our residents, uh, Richard Wigan, and, uh, he was very instrumental in helping us put fencing on the west side of Bruce Armada. So, um, so Goodrich Cemetery is fully enclosed with all new fencing. Everything's been trimmed and it looks very presentable and nice. Um, and, uh, at Bruce Armada Cemetery, we took it and we put fencing on the west side of that. We, uh, Richard Wigan, again, with his help, uh, donated his tractor and we pulled the old fencing off. We refurbished the top rails and the posts, put brand new fencing up on the west side, and the plan is to continuing and closing it. We installed, uh, flight poles in all three cemeteries and, uh, we, we were able to, with donations, uh, put in, uh, a patio in each cemetery along with benches, Bruce Armada and McCafferty. Uh, they both have a nice area where people can go there and sit down by the flight pole and, um, whatever, just deal with their loved ones. Um, in the, in the treasurer's office, we've taken some efficiencies. We've eliminated, uh, mailing tax receipts, which cost us eight, used to cost us $8,000 a year. Uh, that kind of offsets our mailing, our mailings. We probably spend about $10,000. We mail tax bills every year. And that comes to about $10,000 along with our newsletters. So my point is by eliminating tax bills, we're able to offset some of that cost. Um, renegotiated the Romeo Fire and ALS contract, uh, which gave us a $300,000 increase. Uh, we collected 190,000 of unpaid engineering view fees and restructured building and, uh, building and, uh, building permit fees, uh, in order, we restructured the building permit fees in order to become self-funded. In other words, we don't have to take any money out of the general fund in order to pay our inspectors and all that engineering. Uh, there's currently, right now, as we speak, installation of a traffic light and span, uh, expansion of turn lanes at the dangerous intersection of 32 and Mount. Uh, Mike and I worked with, um, Supervisor Praveen over there in Washington and it was a three-way split, well, it was a 50, 50, 25, 60, 20, 20 split with Macomb County and, uh, Washington Township. Uh, we are working with Romeo Schools, uh, a work-based program with students. We have two students that come in, uh, twice a week for three, uh, two and a half hours each day, a total of five hours. And, uh, they can, they come in, they're currently working in the treasurer's office, they're helping us input information into the computer. So they're gonna be here till about May and they're gonna rotate throughout the building, um, uh, learning how we operate here in government. Uh, three to four times a year, we, uh, organized with, uh, the Red Cross for a blood drive and we have a, a blood drive here, uh, where a lot of people come in. We get anywhere from about, um, 35 to 50 people that come in and donate blood, which is, um, these hurricanes and all this stuff that's been happening, uh, there's a shortage of blood. Uh, Fiddler Cove, Mike and I were very instrumental, uh, having the owner and property manager to paint or move unwanted weeds, pick up trash. He could have done a lot better, but you can't really, you know, we did as much as we could as far as forcing him to clean that place up. He did, and because of that, we ended up, you know, Dollar Store went in there and now we have, um, full health, urgent care is now there as well, and, um, a couple other small businesses are in there. That's all I have.
I'll go Anne Marie. So basically, on November 20th, 2020, a completely new board, trust, uh, trustees took over the township. Uh, trustee Mike Tremblay, trustee Lisa Crafty, trustee Frank, our treasurer, Frank Giorgio, clerk Susan Craft, and myself as supervisor. The last four years have flown by and I would like to give a quick recap of how things were then and how things are now. Uh, this is the last meeting that this board, as it sits, will be holding, um, as the four-year term nears the end. Um, after the November 5th general election, there will be anywhere between two important members, where Susan Craft, the clerk, the only unopposed seat. Recently, we have had to replace two of our trustees because they have moved out of the community. And I'd like to give a quick shout out to, and appreciation to Mike Tremblay and Lisa Crafty, who both had a great part of the accomplishments of this board. There's no way we could have done it without them. Therese Smith and Anne Marie Boyce have filled the temporary two vacancies as trustees and have done an exceptional job stepping up and exceeding all of our expectations. Thank you. Additionally, I'd like to thank, uh, our previous chief, Dave Wickham, um, our prior fire chief, for the first three years of, uh, working with this current board and for everything he did. And I hope he's enjoying his retirement. And chief Steve Nagus, uh, Steve Nagus has, uh, taken on the role as a fire chief over the past year and has done an exceptional job since. Thanks, chief. Township had a lot of issues, uh, with the building in itself needed repairs. The roof was leaking, paint was peeling, gutters were missing, parking lot was in bad shape, and the office furniture was all broken down and much more. The board inherited sewer debt of $325,000, a water debt of $550,000, and being, you know, were both being subsidized from the general fund. Sewer taps were sold at half price, costing the township $75,000 in lost revenue. There was $190,000 paid out in engineering fees that were never collected from the developers. There was 2.1 million gallons of water that went unaccounted for every quarter. Building apartment permits and planning and zoning applications were underfunded, being subsidized by, by the general fund. The township's municipal water system operator was under investigation with the state of Michigan, revoked their license, and the township was non-compliant with the state due to the fact that there was no testing being done for lead, copper, and bacteria. OPEB, our retirement healthcare, was at a $9.5 million deficit that was at 0% funded. The Fire and ALS contract to the Village of Romeo was underfunded by $325,000, which was being subsidized by the residents of Bruce Township. And these are just some of the issues that this board had to face in 2020 when we took over. And I can honestly say that getting these issues resolved has been a lot of work, but I can probably say that everything has been resolved and we have a strategy in place for a strong equitable future for, for the township. And with our recent audit report from Plan Moran showing that, that we have increased our general fund this year by 42%, adding an additional $580,000 into our fund balance. And currently, the township sits with $2.8 million unrestricted in our general fund, a great accomplishment by this board over the past four years. Thank you. Additionally, we partnered with the Village of Romeo and Armada Township in a car share program rebuilding Powell Road, partnered with Washington Township having a traffic light installed at intersection of 32 and Mount. Avenue Road was repaid and we continue to add three miles of lines to underground roads every year. We also participated in a Spongy Mall program. And I was personally involved with installation of three more dry fire hydrants in the township with no revenue used out of general fund, uh, for the installation. Currently, we have received a federal grant of $2 million for water main extension, increasing our water district, uh, increasing our water district, not only for fire suppression, but also to add more users onto our system with hopes of lowering the current rates to our residents. Currently, we are in negotiations with the Village of Romeo regarding our sewer contract, again, looking to add more users and offering a lower price for those who are already in the system. I could continue to go on, but I think I've said enough. I just wanted to say thanks for all the hard work, each and every individual board member, planning commission member, board reviews member, zoning board, uh, POs member, and all the office staff along with the fire department. Have contributed to over the past four years, um, for this term. As a supervisor, as a township, as supervisor of the top, of this township, what a pleasure it's been, um, moving this township forward in a much, uh, greater place than, than what it was when we started. So that's been four years.
Thank you.
Anne Marie, I think that Mike Tremblay wanted to say something, but he's got a medical issue.
Uh, yes. Um, I understand that the supervisor had reached out to both Tremblay and Lisa Crafty, who have served most of, uh, the four years. And, uh, Mike, again, was unable to be here today, so he gave me a couple highlights from his perspective. Um, there was the effort to save the parks and rec. Agreement by negotiating a new agreement with Washington Township. The new agreement established parks and recs as a legally recognized separate organization and reduced liabilities to both Bruce and Washington Township. I'm just reading some of the highlights. I could go on a while, but, um, key, there are several, uh, process improvements that Mike spearheaded, uh, working with the planning and zoning department. And that was, he had a great opportunity to do that given his service on the planning commission and being the liaison. He pointed out, working with the supervisor and the office staff to implement a monitoring process of the trust and authority accounts to reduce the likelihood of the township being in a deficit position with any particular development. He, uh, was highly involved in the procurement of the BSNA planning and zoning in order to improve office workflow and communications across the township departments. He, uh, importantly, uh, chaired, uh, a committee to successfully resolve the outstanding Metco Timbers consent judgment. The net result of that, uh, was the township receiving a payment in the amount of seven, or $73,875, uh, that otherwise would not have come to the township's benefit. And I think those are the highlights.
There was a rezoning of, I'm trying to remember, the church property. It was a, it was multifamily, yet led to an R1, uh, R1 beat. For the people that lived in.
Yes.
Boardwalk in our Excalibur, which is a great town. So he worked with the church on that and saved the people those two subdivisions from him.
Correct.
High density.
Yes, being of rezonings, uh, he points out actually a month, multi-month process, uh, that he spearheaded to getting to the best reasonable existing options for the five acre parcel on West Gates. That resulting in, uh, a rezoning that had multiple conditions that will mandate very specifically what can and cannot be done on that property. It was actually a, uh, 15 meetings over the course of five years. And obviously, the preferred outcome by many, uh, would be to have the property remain exactly as is. That was not something that was reasonable or enforceable, more importantly.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Anybody else? What we got?
I haven't been, I've only been here a few.
Susan, you?
Can I say mine?
Oh, I, yeah, go ahead. She's got one.
I, I say that, uh, I could say that for communications, but really, I wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate Mike and Susan and Frank and Lisa and Mike Tremblay and Theresa as well, uh, for your hard work and accomplishments over the last four years. Uh, I've recognized that there's been disagreements, differences of opinion, but in the end, you have overcome those. Uh, every board member has an equal vote and has been responsible equally for affecting the turnaround that we have seen, and I think all of you should be congratulated. I've been happy to pitch in the last four months, uh, and I look forward to continuing to serve on the planning commission.
You're doing a fine job. Thank you.
You both did a fine job filling in. I'd love to say thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, let's move on to communications. And chief, so quiet order, why don't you go first? You know, I, you mind?
Thank you.
How that was going? Probably start with it.
It was great. Great turnout, um, great support. It was, uh, passed everybody. It was definitely happy, but what it was beautiful.
How many hot dogs did you go to?
About three hundred.
About, uh, how many dozen donuts?
Twelve. Six jobs aside. It does include, but it's a lot in the park.
It was, it was a great event.
It's a great event, again. Good time.
Better next year, right?
Always better.
The building, yeah, okay. Obviously, the building looks good.
Okay, Smith, for this building, that's been coming out great, so, and continue moving forward, making, uh, continue making improvements in the building. I didn't realize that this would be your last meeting for some of you, so I do thank you for.
Where are the donuts?
They, they were eaten on Saturday. Sorry. I do appreciate also the board members that are here, the current board members, got a great job, uh, and have supported the fire department one hundred percent, as, as the goal I noticed, and it's, uh, greatly thankful for it. So we make my job a lot easier. Guys have made a lot of changes. I know sometimes it doesn't seem like it out there, but guys have improved group township immensely, so I thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Theresa.
Okay, so if you can comment. Um, I did read through our Bruce Township personnel policies and employee handbook. I think it would be a good thing for the employees to go through again. There's some things I highlighted myself as I was looking at that probably would have helped with some of the comments they were pulling out in the office. I just want to comment back, and I do want to say thank you for the appointments this year, and it is totally different being on this side of the table than on the outside of the table, and it is a very difficult job. I mean, there's a lot of giving, taking, and it is difficult, but thank you, and I'm glad I had the opportunity.
Thanks for stopping by.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Anne Marie and Theresa, for filling in. You guys did a great job, and it's been a pleasure working with you. Uh, yeah, we're having a blood drive on December seventh here. If anybody wants to sign up, you can call us or go on our Facebook page and look at our events, and that's where it's at. If I offended anybody, I just want to apologize. Uh, I have no intent on ever offending anybody. I get very passionate about this township and taxpayers' money, and I don't like to see anything go to waste. And, um, and also, you know, about the employees here, we have good employees here, and they don't get enough credit. They're very respectful people, and they do their job. Um, they will do anything that's asked of them. So anyway, if I've offended anybody, I apologize. No hard feelings.
Susan?
Judge Andrew will be here on, um, the eleventh of, excuse me, November twentieth, at ten thirty A M. for the swearing-in of the new board. So mark your calendars.
Andrew?
Ten thirty. We sent out twenty-one hundred and ninety ballots. Heps and T ballots. Uh, early voting will begin on October twenty-sixth and go through November third at the Washington Township Hall from eight thirty to four thirty. Election Day is eleven-five, November fifth, and the clerk's office will be open on Saturday, November second, from seven thirty to three thirty for election-related business. Thank you, Theresa, and thank you, Anne Marie. It's been a pleasure working with you. That's it.
Only after communications, basically, you know, get about the veterans tomorrow. It's going to be the Bruce Township Park behind the building on November eleventh. Um, at eleven eleven A M., it's going to be put on by the V F W, Romeo V F W post. So please come on out, we'll have hot dogs, and maybe we'll get some donuts for you, Theresa.
Okay. Are you still going to come to all the meetings? I will be.
Lynette, if nobody's got anything else for this board to go ahead and discuss, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Giorgio? All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Everybody watching at home. Appreciate it.